Good evening, we're gonna call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. The quorum is present, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Isbrand, will you lead us? Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Tedford, do we have any citizen comments? Perfect. I'm gonna move the agenda around a little bit and go to 6.3, discussion of possible action on an engagement letter with Bracewell LLP for Legal Services in coordinating the creation of the City of Castle Hills Public Facility Corporation, including negotiation and documentation associated with a public-private partnership with Vicaro for a multifamily project in the City of Castle Hills. I understand that we're not at a point to make a decision on how to proceed with this, but at this particular juncture, I think it would be prudent to engage Bracewell so that they could ask, answer some questions for us the council may have as it makes its mind on how to proceed with this offer that's in front of us. And it's my understanding that Bracewell will be compensated by the developer and not by the City of Castle Hills, which is why we need to formalize this arrangement. Mr. Schnell?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that the Bracewell agreement has a reference to the fact that the Bracewell agreement with the developer was to be attached as an exhibit. I don't know if that attachment has been received by the city. So even if the council proceeds with this item tonight, I would ask that the city manager or the mayor not sign the agreement until it's complete.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rappley, any comments?
As far as the engagement letter, Mark, they have a copy of it? Oh, the agreement developer? Yeah, we did not receive yet.
Okay, so as I understand, the first step would be that the city council would vote to engage with Bracewell and then the developer would sign on their end?
Separate agreement with the developer, that's a fee agreement. The fee agreement with the developer is covers Bracewell's fees whether the city proceeds with the PFC and with the project or not. And so at this point, they're waiting to know if the city is interested in even looking at the project before they sign onto to their agreement. Is it not on? I'm sorry, is? I think the the bag may be hindering the the mic. So so Caro is waiting to see if the city is interested in further investigating the project before they sign their fee arrangement with us. That arrangement is just for fees. Our privity and our client would be the city. So we don't have any privity. They'll have their own council representing their interests in the agreement. We'd be representing the city, but it is customary for the developer to pay your expenses associated with reviewing the proposal as a bank would require other lending situations would have a standard practice.
Okay, do we have any motions, council?
Can I make questions?
Or do you need a motion first?
What was that, Mr. Paul? I'm sorry.
Do what?
Did you say something?
I say, do, may I make a comment or a question before we go that way?
Sure.
It seems to me like that's putting the cart before the horse. I think if we proceed with this, obviously Bracewell will be who we want to engage. But why would we want to go through all the motions at this point in time until we decide whether we want to proceed or not? That's just the way I look at it. Maybe I'm just a little too basic.
So it was my understanding in order to have Bracewell in executive session, we would have to engage them. Is that correct, Mr. Schnell? Okay, so that was kind of the impetus to skip into number three so we can formalize this engagement without committing ourselves to doing the PFC or paying for it to proceed down the next course of action.
I don't mean to belittle our potential partners. Don't take it that way. But I look at you, Bracewell, as bringing something to us to sell us. And we don't go into paperwork until we decide we're going to buy. That's just the way I look at things and I could be way off base and I apologize.
So I think that the distinction would be, and Jim Plummer is here on via video, and next month he will be back in San Antonio and available to be here in person. But the distinction is that we represent a lot of cities and counties in their public facility corporations. The developer always pays our fees because the cities and the counties don't want to accrue these costs to do a project that they probably didn't care if it happened. Somebody else brings them the idea of the project. And so the developers always pay for the legal fees on both sides. What the council to the PFC does is advise you on how to structure your development agreement on what would be standard in terms of the financial split, the risk split. And so, I mean, it really is bringing in attorneys to represent you. I know it. It seems strange that we came in at the same time the developer came in. That's because they found a piece of land in your city. They wanted to use this structure and Jim Plummer is the attorney that does this structure for basically everybody in Texas that does it. So they asked that we take a look at it and that we meet with the mayor and that we start helping the city think about a PFC. But if you want to proceed this way, then we would we are really standing with you as your lawyers. We're not bringing you.
Understand, but still, until we decide we want to proceed with the project. And that's why I thought we were going to hopefully get a few more specific questions answered tonight as someone trying to present a project to us to engage in.
Right.
That's just the way I.
I understand what you're saying. Really, you know, the engagement letter is for us to represent you and help you answer those questions. Some of that we can do in open session. The financial questions are probably better handled in closed session. And so in order for us to go behind closed doors with you in a closed session, we need to be recognized as your attorneys. Without the engagement letter, we're prohibited from doing that and that leaves us to just those questions we can answer in open session.
Well, I've said my piece.
Likely this, Jim, can I jump in for a moment?
Yeah.
I think it'd be very appropriate for this council to have a motion to engage us with specific instructions to the city manager not to sign a contract with us and the engagement letter with us until such time as we have the developer's fee agreement signed. And I'll get the fee agreement signed. I think the bit of a misunderstanding here is that Caro had indicated solely are you willing to discuss the issue? They are not looking for an approval before they sign their fee letter with us. They just want to know, are you interested enough to get down this road and start talking?
Mr. Isbrand?
I would share Mr. Paul's sentiment on this. I think this is a case of the cart before the horse. We don't know if we're interested yet. We haven't had enough information. We haven't had discussion. This hasn't really been public. And it strikes me as odd that we would proceed down this path before we've done any of that. So I would have great hesitation about this.
I don't think anybody's asking you to commit to anything and I'll get their fee letter signed. But Caro will be happy to compensate us whether you go forward or not go forward just to have an opportunity to talk to you. So we'll get that done.
So, and I appreciate that very much, but I think it's based on the presumption that we want to go forward and we don't know that we do yet because we don't have enough information yet. So I realize that it would be in your best interest to get it signed because then you are retained or paid by them. But we don't know if we want to go this path yet. And I think that we deserve a lot more information to be put out here before we start to make these kinds of decisions.
And typically, our role is to help you untangle that information. It's it's information that is without context and without having spent some time on these projects would be very difficult to decipher and really lay out the risk performer, the financial performer and understand what all that means long term. So that's what we would be proposing to help you with is answer those questions and think of more questions so that you're sure that you really understand the project. Like Jim has said, whether you proceed or not doesn't is not really relevant to whether you elicit our help or not.
Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for our city attorney relevant to the phrasing of a potential motion. The first part of the question is, would it be appropriate to make the motion that the city manager draft a letter and then place a contingency that it not be signed as it's been suggested before it's conveyed? Is that appropriate?
Mr. Mayor, I think what I said earlier and what Mr. Plummer said a few minutes ago would be an appropriate way to do this, that the city council, someone on the council, if they're inclined, could make a motion to authorize the city to enter into the agreement with Bracewell on the condition that prior to signing, Bracewell provides a complete copy of the agreement inclusive of the exhibit signed by the developer. The city secretary can read back my quote.
To go along with what Mr. May is saying, just providing the documents, we know the documents will be forthcoming, but yet we may still not have decided that we want to proceed. That's all I'm saying.
And so really, in terms of our engagement, you're not obligated to do any project. I mean, we wouldn't expect that you would consider doing a project till you've fully vetted it. This is this is just a relationship to help you understand the project, to understand what opportunities might be and and to make sure that you understand it fully before you enter into it. But there is no expectation that you would proceed with a project when you engage council.
Mr. Joyce, you had a comment?
Well, there's two things that are going through my mind. The first is very similar to Mr. Isbrand and Paul. It seems like we're a little bit ahead of the game here. At this point, we're trying to figure out if we want to do the project. And if the answer to that is yes, we need to figure out if we want to work with you guys.
That's a, yeah, that's a different way of approaching it. Usually you've got your lawyer and then you look at the project. But if you'd rather look at the project and then look at council, that's.
I came prepared to discuss further with you guys. We appreciate your coming a couple of weeks ago and helping us understand very nice presentation and all that. But we were not familiar with these PFCs and we've done a little homework, of course, in the interim. So it's like getting, you know, drinking through a fire hose to use that title cliche. But I have a few questions related to the statute and you guys and your experience with the statute to try to help us figure out if you are the right team for us. And so I was a little surprised to see the agreement show up in our email the other day. So I guess from your standpoint, you're willing to help us with these questions. Does that extend? Now, of course, you need to get paid. And so in order to get paid, you need to get that agreement signed. But if the agreement doesn't get signed until next week, will the developer still pay you for helping us tonight?
Sure. And we're not worried about those pieces of it. The bigger issue is that if you're ready to start talking about anything financial, that needs to happen in an executive session. You want to talk about the statute, we can do that in public session. That's not, you don't need to have an engagement for that. But it's the going into executive session if you're ready to dive into any of the financial or the legal terms that would be part of the structure. But if you want to hear more about the statute and about our experience with PFCs, I mean, Jim Plummer is here and available to walk through all of that.
Counsel, if for whatever reason you're, we're not comfortable proceeding with signing the engagement letter, then we're welcome to discuss the non-financial aspects of this deal in public. And I guess at that point, we can decide if we want to proceed with the engagement letter to go into executive session to discuss the financial component.
So you're saying unless we sign the letter, we can't dig into the performer?
Not with us in closed session because we're not representing you. We need to be your lawyers to have the executive session privilege with you.
It seems like putting car.
But there is no obligation associated with this letter. You don't have to retain us forever. You don't have to, you know, you're not going to get a bill. It's really just.
Mr. Schnell, what would your recommendation be? We would like to get more information so that we know what we're doing to decide whether we want to move forward or not and what is the best way to get that handled so that, you know, we don't want to put a whole bunch of people, cause even the developer, a lot of unnecessary expense if we don't do it.
Oh, I see two alternatives. One alternative is for the mayor to, after Mr. Gregory has a chance to comment, because he hasn't commented yet. Consider just closing this agenda item for the moment, going back to agenda item number one, having the open discussion about those matters which Mr. Fernandez indicates can be discussed in an open session, the non-financial aspects of a PFC and this whole idea and this whole project. And then make a choice at that point of whether to go forward with the Bracewell engagement and then go into executive session tonight. That's one alternative. The other alternative is to go ahead and adopt a motion along the lines of my interchange with Mr. May a few minutes ago. I agree with Mr. Fernandez that the entering into the agreement with Bracewell does not bind the city to make any deal whatsoever, does not bind the city to form a public facility corporation or go forward with anything else other than getting the benefit of legal advice on the PFC and the financial opportunities that may be available from experienced counsel on public facility corporations. And so that would be another option. But again, I would only recommend that motion include a specific statement that it is subject to being provided with a fully executed agreement executed on behalf of Bracewell with the exhibit of the agreement with Bracewell and the Caro company that Plummer indicated that's the way these are usually done, as did Mr. Fernandez. And so I think that that makes it reasonable to proceed in order to have the specialized counsel available to the city council in an executive session to get into the numbers part of this as opposed to the generic part. How a public facility corporation is structured, what's the board of directors and what powers does it have? You know, all of that's in chapter 303 of the local government. So I'm, you know, the copy that can be provided to give the council that information. But to understand the economics of this proposal, we would either need to have those numbers in front of you and give you an opportunity to ask questions about those numbers, test the performance with experienced public facility corporation counsel.
But to do that, then we'd need the engagement to handle that. Is it like?
I have said from day one on this project that to have Bracewell in the room, Bracewell needs to be engaged as the city's attorney. Otherwise, there's a significant risk of violation of Open Meetings Act. None of us want to do that.
Mr. Gregory, you had some comments?
One question, who's the developer's attorney?
Jim, do you know?
It's Rob Killen.
That's their lobbyist, but.
I thought they were representing them in more than just Jim now.
Jim, do you know who's representing Vicaro?
Give me two seconds, I'm looking.
Looking at him.
Oh, he's looking. I don't know whether you all are, you know, Mrs. Fernandez well or not. I know her quite well. She's got a razor sharp mind. I may not agree politically on some things, but I trust her anytime, anywhere. And it is a little interesting to me that the developer is providing to us, the attorney, to explain to us material that is highly entangled and highly difficult to understand, but for an explanation by attorneys. My question is, does the council want to engage their own attorney rather than an attorney that the developer thinks would be a good one for us to have? That's the first question in my mind because it's a little, if I didn't know her, I wouldn't go any further than where we are right now, but because I do know you.
In an ordinary situation, a city would decide we want to do more affordable housing. We like the idea of it being mixed income. And so how, you know, what would that look like in our city? How would we do that? And they do a little bit of investigation and they discover that there's something called a PFC that has been very successful. They would choose to create that and then they would probably put out a call for developers to bring them projects that would come in under the PFC. So Jim created the statute. He's worked with the City of San Antonio and other cities on this for a long time. In this situation, you had a developer see a piece of land, think this is a good project for a PFC structure. Let me see if Bracewell is representing Castle Hills. No, they're not. Let me see if I can connect them because in order to get these very complicated deals done, people use Jim Plummer. I don't, it's, I'm an administrative law and a public finance lawyer. And so, you know, my piece, there's a piece of this project that I'll participate in because there's an extra step you need to do as a general law city. That's not an ordinary part of the process. And so I'm engaged for that small piece, which is more of an economic development portion. But for PFC work, there, I mean, you could put out an RFP, but it's just Jim. And so that's why the developer called and said, we got to find a way to connect you to the city if we're going to do this so that we can find a way to get it done. But Jim, do you want to restate that in a more elegant way?
Perhaps it would help if the council would like, if I just gave them some background on our activities with regard to public facility corporations. And so they can just get a feel for our level of expertise.
My colleagues are confirming, yes, they would like to hear that.
Okay. The public facility corporations came about because many council members at the City of San Antonio, particularly in our eastern and western sectors of the city, could not find a way to bring higher quality market rate product to their council districts. And I do most all of the affordable housing on behalf of government entities in the City of San Antonio. And so they tasked us with a, find a way to be able to do workforce housing, mixed income housing at a high level, but mostly bring us market rate. So I revised the public facility corporation statute at the legislature, developed a financial structure that would enable those projects to be done in a format where the government entity would make no investment, would incur no risk, but would get the benefit of the project by virtue of bringing a property tax exemption to the project. And so I have done, probably closed on 17, 18 of these deals around the state. Probably am currently working on 10 or 12 of them. I don't represent anybody but government entities. I represent the city, Bear County, San Antonio Housing Authority, Travis County Housing Authority, the City of Dallas, Harris County with regard to these public facility corporation deals and numerous small cities who have begun to undertake these deals because they're beneficial to the cities. And so I am usually recommended by all of the developers who are considering these deals because I understand how they work. And because we have a structure, the government entities find results and no risk to them and brings about a very high quality product and delivers cash flow to them. And so the part of the reason that Vicaro would recommend us is because we are probably the recognized experts in the state on doing public facility corporation deals. And so that, we are the, probably the only council that Vicaro knows of, who has done a bunch of these deals. And we know how to structure them in a way that allows the developer to go out and raise his debt equity. And so that's principally the reason that in almost every one of the PFC deals around, developers have asked if they can have the government entity hire us. And we've represented a lot of government entities on these transactions.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Sure. Counsel, I'll take direction from you if you all like to proceed with the engagement letter to discuss the financials in executive session, or if you want to go back to item number one and discuss this at a high level, fundamental level.
So basically, bottom line is we can't talk finances. We can't talk the performer. We can't go through any of the numbers that will help us make our decision until we engage you to give you the right or privilege or responsibility to discuss it with us. Is that, is that what I'm reading in?
We can't do it with you in executive session because of the open meetings requirement. So we can't go into executive session with you.
Right. But are these numbers necessarily have to be in executive session? I mean, I don't know why, if the transparency aspect would have to be in executive session, maybe there's a reason.
Well, I think you start getting into your contract negotiations. So ordinarily, you would not want those recorded and published because that undermines your negotiation position. So, you know, you met us with Vicaro, but that's not who we represent. We're not here to promote their interests in the deal. We're here to promote the city's interest in the deal.
Mr. Joyce?
I might point out that this agreement with Bracewell can be terminated at any time with or without cause. So if we sign it and decide we don't like it, we can terminate it tomorrow.
Mr. Joyce, if we're making, if we're bringing counsel in to represent the city, do you think that the residents of this community deserve to know of the action that we're taking?
Certainly.
And that's the problem I think that I'm having with this right now is these discussions have been very narrow up to this time. Back some of these discussions have taken place absent many, if not all of us in them. And it just feels to me like we're moving very quickly to get something down the road. When, I'll just speak for myself, of course. I left the last meeting very unsatisfied that I had the knowledge or even basic information to really understand all this. I have no objection with Bracewell. And no one needs to, you know, argue to me about why you all would be wonderful counsel for us. And I appreciate that. But it is a little bit problematic to me, at least from my point of view, that we would start to take these steps when we have not really even engaged in any kind of transparency, as Mr. Paul said here, about with our community on this. So we're irrespective of who pays for an attorney we hire tonight. This city council would be hiring an attorney to take action. This city council would be hiring an attorney to take action for us on something we have not even talked to our community about. And that's, I guess, part of the, the, the issue that I have with this. And I feel like we, before we go down this path, it would be beneficial for us maybe to get some more basic information under our belts and decide if we're even interested in this, instead of the presumption being that we are interested in it, need to know how to form a, a public facilities corporation, or I apologize, whatever the name of it is here. That's, that's what gives me the pause on, on doing this tonight.
Mr. Isren, I take full responsibility for that. The direction that I heard was that they wanted, the council wanted to hear the financial component, which I completely agree with, which is why I had tried to lead with the engagement so we could have that conversation, not that we're trying to expedite by any stretch of the imagination, what we're going to do, whether we take a month or three months. At some point, we need to discuss the financials. Now, if we'd like to take a step back and focus superficially on the structure and how it works related to Castle Hills, by all means.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're right about us wanting to do the financials. I think it, in my case, I really wasn't understanding that the only way Bracewell or anybody can touch or talk about the finances with us is by representing, by an engagement letter. So you're right about what we wanted or what I wanted. Don't want to hear about the finances when you're telling me that now, or we're, I'm learning that we have to, before we can do B, we have to do A, to move to B and have the option of doing C, if that's what it takes to just say, thank you very much, but we're not interested. It just seems like it'd be wasting a lot of, maybe it could be wasting a lot of time. I mean, it may not be. But if that's the only way we can get finance information to determine whether we're going to move ahead or not, we need to finance information, in my opinion. How do we get there? If that's the only way we get there, we don't have a choice.
Counsel, I'll go back to my previous statement. Y'all set the tone on how you'd like to proceed. We can go back to item number one, talk about the structure superficially and how it relates to the city, or we can engage and have a conversation that includes the financial component as it relates to the city.
I, I would like to go back to the way the agenda was written myself. I think even having some more basic information might help us to put us in a better, smarter position to then act on this if we choose to, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. If that's the case, we will close item six point three with no action taken. I will proceed to six point one, discussion on a potential economic development opportunity proposed by a business prospect. Ms. Fernandez, what can you tell us without going into executive session?
Well, let me, um, let me introduce my partner, Jim Plummer. Jim runs our housing practice at Bracewell in the public finance section and is kind of the master of all things public facilities corporation. You've got a long presentation, detailed presentation from Summer Great House, who's also with our team last week, but I think in terms of a quick overview of why a city might enter into a PFC and what those benefits are and what the deal structure is, I'm going to let Jim take that.
All right. First off, I, I am going to disclose some financial information. And, and gentlemen, what I would, what I would like to do is tell you what the developers have proposed. The thing that I do not want to do in public is have a discussion about a negotiation strategy, which is appropriate. So we'll, we'll start with kind of the big picture. I'm taking it that you gentlemen have not seen the pro forma for this project. Because we do have a full set of numbers, and if you have not, then we'll get them to you. We'll get the developer to release them and get them to you. This is a three hundred unit apartment complex that will be structured in a format where you would create a public facility corporation. It's a separate legal entity. It would be, then be the owner of the complex. The developers would have to go out and raise the capital to build this project, assume the risk of building this project. They would operate the project under a seventy-five year lease. You would typically be paid a fee at closing. The developers have proposed a $250,000 fee at closing. You would be paid rent under your lease, beginning in year three. The reason we begin in year three is because it takes two years to construct the project, about a half a year to get it leased up. So we would start collecting rent. It would be the greater of twenty-five percent of the net operating income from the project after the payment of a required preferred return to their equity partner, or twenty-five percent of the taxes that the project would have paid if it was a taxable property. When the project goes to sell, which will likely be somewhere between year three and year five, you will receive twenty-five percent of essentially the profits from the sale of the project. They have to repay the debt that they borrowed and they have to repay the equity investors, but you'll get twenty-five percent of the amount over that. Once they sell the project, a new buyer will come in. You will continue to receive rent equal to the greater of twenty-five percent of the taxes, or twenty-five percent of their net operating income. And you will continue to receive twenty-five percent of the increased value of the project from the prior sale to the next sale for a seventy-five year period. The estimated value of the amount that the city would receive, and I need to find the dashboard real quick, but I believe it's going to be about six million dollars over the first approximately five years of this project. And then you will continue to receive rent, which I would, I would roughly estimate in the neighborhood of $250,000 a year after that. And then the increase at twenty-five percent of the increase in value, which I cannot estimate, that's that's beyond my ability and, and factual knowledge. But to give you some idea of what the analysis is and what the financials look like, that's how these deals are typically structured. And that is, that, that's actually how these deals with the Caro are typically structured. The deals we typically have done with the San Antonio Housing Authority and with the San Antonio Housing Trust have been at a fifteen percent level instead of a twenty-five percent level. And typically, the rent has not been a component of the taxable value of the property. The reason we do the rent as a component of the taxable value is because you, as a city, probably collect twenty to twenty-five percent of the total taxes on that property. And so we want to put you in a position where you can tell your taxpayers that your city is receiving at least as much as they would have received if this is a taxable project. And so that's why we structure it that way. So that's, that's a lot of information on the finances. What I personally would like to do, because I don't really like Zoom calls, is I'd like to, I'd like to be able to come over and sit down with you guys and walk through the pro formas and have a detailed discussion and make certain that we're answering all your questions. And I think if you have additional questions, you should ask them. If we feel like it's better to be discussed in executive session, I'll be more than happy to say, can we defer that to, we can have an executive session discussion? But, but there, there should be no hiding the ball here. Our only interest is to make sure we get you the best deal we can get you and we don't tip our hand before we are able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Mr. Paul?
Is that gross revenue? And you're figuring the twenty-five percent on the rent factor. Is that gross revenue or is that net revenue?
It, it, it actually is a net revenue. They got to pay their, all their expenses first. Twenty-five percent of gross would be way over anything they could afford to pay and still pay their debt service.
That's what I'm asking. And, and, and the, they show over five years, the first five years from zero to five, anticipating selling at five on the pro forma, and stop me if I'm out of line, it shows a minimum of one hundred and twenty-five, which is twenty-five a year, but you've already said that it would be year three before we start doing anything. Am I wrong there?
The twenty-five a year is an administrative fee we charge on top of the rent I described earlier.
So that's a minimum, and we'll get that in that first year or two?
Abs, uh, yeah, that'll start, yes, yes.
But again, the sheet shows one hundred and twenty-five, which shows twenty-five for, for five years, so that was probably an error.
No, it's just how he presented it. Just, it, it is a sheet that he presented for public consumption. The, you would, you would begin receiving twenty-five during construction, and then you would start receiving cash flow, really beginning in the third year afterwards. And, and truthfully, th- this building is likely, uh, going to have a value where their taxes would have been a million dollars a year, beginning by probably year four. And so you're going to get twenty-five percent of that. So the tax piece, to me, in the early years, is more valuable because it assures that you're going to get what the city would have gotten if somebody were able to build this building and pay taxes on it.
Now, the tax savings for the, for the builder, for the developer, is based on the total tax of, like, school district and everything, not just Castle Hills.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. What, what really ends up happening is you get the city of Castle Hills share, the county share and the school district share help create cash flow that enables them to go out and get a big enough loan to build this building. And then you recoup a significant amount of money upon sale of the project.
I can keep going. I, I, I feel like I'm monopolizing the time. I apologize. My next question is in, I'll, I'll make this be the last one. I need to let my colleagues talk. But all this stuff is going through my mind like a motion picture. And the one thing that was not in the pro forma, which you brought out, which I was going to ask, what happens after the first, assuming, after the first sale, after five years, then we continue all over and start over again? So the person who buys the product in the next year, the sixth year, whatever, he's responsible for gross amount, I mean, the net rent. We get twenty-five percent of that, but we don't get any upfront like we did in the first five years.
That, that is correct. You don't get any upfront. But you do get twenty-five percent of the difference between his purchase price and his, his sale price, the value increases after he pays his debt and his equity.
Seventy-five years are the statutory through, through, oh, three. I looked for it and I didn't see it. Where'd we come up, seventy-five years?
Wait, the, the seventy-five years is always a really big issue because it's, it's a long time, but the banks won't finance shorter term leases.
They'll do twenty years?
No, sir. They will not. And, and I, I have, I tried to do a fifty-year deal and the banks just absolutely refused. They, they want the ability, if they have to foreclose in year twenty-nine, they want the ability to do a new thirty-year period and have some tail left. And, and I have, I've had direct conversations with the banks. I cannot get them to go shorter.
After the twenty-five years we own it, it's given to us.
Seventy-five years.
Then we turn around. Thank you. Shut up.
Mr. Joyce, I see you on the trigger.
Yeah, that seventy-five years is, as Mr. Plummer says, the kind of the rubber meeting the road here, I guess, with this thing. Because what, it reverts back to us at that time. And of course, every building system is beyond its useful life. And, um, you know, its value is probably not very high at that point. If I read the, the statute correctly, it aims for a high quality, for a high quality product. And so that was interpreted, I'm not sure if it was your documentation or perhaps it was the Caro's documentation, as a Class A project, which means many things, great location, finishes, construction quality, and so far, so far, so forth. And so I don't know how that Class A can be maintained over seventy-five years. And it appears that the statute doesn't address the sale. And if I'm reading it right, it says nothing about the sale. So we're dependent on our relationship and negotiation with the Caro to transfer all of these things that apply to us, all these wonderful things, to the new owner. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Plummer?
Well, it happens automatically because what they're going to be selling is a leasehold interest, and our lease will contain all of these things. And so our lease will say it must be maintained as a Class A product. But I, I want to, I want to address the seventy-five years. There is no possible way for this apartment project to stay in place and exactly as it is for seventy-five year period. At some point, and it's probably year twenty, in order to be able to get the market rate rents, which they will need to demand to pay their debt service, they will have to rehabilitate this project. At that point, there will be a renegotiation of some kind. If, if this statutory provision is still available, they could agree that we're going to invest a, a, a large sum of money, rehabilitate the project and get down the road, and, and your relationship could continue. But most likely, over that term, there will be a renegotiation with the city. In that negotiation, you will basically be a twenty-five percent owner. So you will have a seat at the table. And you will have the ability to decide what, what you're willing to do and what you're not willing to do at that point in the future. But given the requirement to have a seventy-five year financing lease, and we, we can't control what's going to happen down the road, and we have to rely upon their need to come back and do a rehabilitation of this project. So this deal will be negotiated probably two or three times in that seventy-five year period.
Thank you.
We have no more questions from Mr. Plummer, Mr. Isren, Mr. Gregory, Mr. May? So, Mr. Gregory, yes, sir.
You know, there's, there's a lot of assumption here. The only way you can do it. But the problem I have is consistency. When you have mixed income housing, you lose consistency of people are going to be there. And if people are not there, you move from mixed income to lower income rather rapidly in order to get income generated. And that bothers me. And that bothers me. Now, I'm, be long, the 75 years comes around, and I will, the mayor might still be here. He may be in a wheelchair, but I'll be dead. But but, uh, I, I, it's the longer-term constant, you know, one thing that struck out is that you, the city will incur no risk. And I think we have an enormous risk here of rebranding the city of what we have. If we, if we start, I think we should stay at the level of quality of, of housing that we want in this city that we are, we know of, we know we'll be consistent, we know we'll be here 20 years from now. And when you have mixed-income housing, to me, the risk goes up, way up, in the long term. In the short term, it may not. But the next person who buys it in five years, and that's something that I really have difficulty with. They're basically flipping the property in five years. They can do anything they want to. They can move from mixed income to whatever they want. Am I wrong there?
Oh, they could, but it would be a financial disaster if you pay $88 million for this property. You have got to keep your rents up to be able to pay your debt service.
Depends upon if you have a large enough entity that writes off the debt versus the assets they have on the book. Therefore, it ends up they really don't care. But, uh, I don't know, it's, um, I'm, I'm really jazzed that somebody would, is looking at us and would like to do something here. And, uh, I want to know more. I want to know a lot more before I'm convinced this has long-term, not short-term, long-term beneficial, positive effects for the people who live here, people who want to come here long after I'm dead, and it doesn't end up to being a burden on the city. You're a 25% owner, you gotta come up with some money. And although that's 75 years down the road, I don't want any risk to occur. And you've said we incur no risk, but I just see the potential risk here and there, but the more I know, the, the less I may feel about this. So that's why I want to know more information.
Mr. Joyce?
Just a quick follow-up to Mr. Gregory's question about the, the tenants. Can we not negotiate with Baccaro and require that they not allow subsidized housing? No, it's not.
Um.
It's not subsidized.
Yeah, it's not subsidized. I, I honest to God, I will have to do a little looking to see whether or not it's legal to prohibit subsidized. Um, I'm, I'm not sure you can do that under the Fair Housing Law. Um, and-
The statute is written, this is an exception. This 50% has to be 80% of the particular income. That's the exception to the rule that allows for subsidized housing.
It's not subsidized.
Oh, I know, but the, the main tenet, I don't have the thing with me, but the main tenet that discusses taxation and the tenant portion of it suggests that, I think it was, you have to have at least 20% public housing. It's called public housing, but public housing is later defined as subsidized housing.
No, no, sir, that's not correct. There, there is literally no requirement to have public housing. There will be no public housing in this project. It isn't, or you can either have 50% at 80, or you can have 20% of public housing. And this is, this project is not intended to ever have public housing of any kind. Or be subsidized in any way. If you look at the rents, their lowest-level rent that they are performing in this project is $1,100 a month. And so they are not anticipating having any subsidy in this project, and they're not charging rents that would be eligible for any subsidy in this project.
Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Wouldn't the better term for this proposal, based on what I've heard, be affordable housing?
As opposed to subsidized housing?
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Even in this case, it's probably more workforce housing.
Okay, and i- if the question is permitted, this parcel of, of property is an effort to control residential development on a property that otherwise would remain unused or used in a commercial way. Am I correct?
Right, right. And, but for the height restriction, I mean, it, it may not come back to you for a commercial decision at all.
And would it be a mischaracterization to call the projected rents on the upper or higher end of the rent market in the metro area?
Well, I think the way that Scott explained it when we were here a few weeks ago was they've gotta have 50% of the units with the rent set at 80% of AMI. And then you balance that with 30% of your income. You don't want your rent to exceed 30% of income. So that's the test they use. What Scott told us was that for this project, that, that amount equals market rate for this market up until the three-bedroom, I think. Maybe it's the two and three-bedroom, but, but only the larger units are actually going to have a cap on rent that's gonna be artificial. And I think he said it was six of the units would have an artificial cap.
And isn't it true that the market that is most contiguous to this development project is in an area that is much higher than the average San Antonio metro area?
Well, the AMI that we use is countywide.
Okay.
And that's, that's just the statutory definition. It's countywide. The average median income that we use is a countywide number. Is that, or a metropolitan area number? Okay, so it's the whole MSA.
Mr. Isbram?
Um, just a couple of questions. Ms. Fernandez, you just said that if we didn't do this, this property is gonna sit there.
Oh.
Who's, where does, what's the source of that information, that it won't ever be used for anything else?
I'm sorry, I did not, I certainly didn't intend to say that. If I said that, my, my comment was that it would likely be used in a, a commercial, it's zoned commercial, and it just wouldn't come back to the city. You wouldn't, you know, unless there was a zoning change. Or, in this case, they're gonna ask for a height variance. But if they don't need a variance or a zoning change, it's commercial, it would just be developed however it's gonna be developed.
Right, and, and I think that's important to note that, that we've heard this a couple of times now. This was said the last time we were here, sort of this, well, if you don't take this deal, and you all are out of luck, nothing's ever gonna come there. And I don't think that's necessarily the case. So I appreciate your clarification on that, because I'm, I was intrigued about that. Mr. Plummer, thank you, um, for your answer to these questions. I think this, this has been very helpful, and it's probably an excellent starting point for this. I had, um, a, a question for you. You said this deal would probably be renegotiated two or three times during the 75 years. I suspect I'll be one of those who won't be around for any of those negotiations. But I'm curious, from your other experience in, in this type of environment, what do those kinds of renegotiations look like? Do cities end up with more? Do they end up with less? Is there a way for you to generalize what we might anticipate if we went through renegotiations two or three times?
Truthfully, no, there's not enough history. I amended the statute in 2016. So there's, there's simply not a long-term history on that. I can tell you that the one deal that we have had, have a renegotiation on, the government entity came out much better in the deal. But I can't tell you, I, I don't have enough experience to be able to answer it on a very, very broad scope.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. And my other question is, is, is there a presumption that this project is sold in three to five years? Because that's been referenced many times too. Is, what if it's not sold in three to five years? What if, you know, there are other possi- other scenarios here, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand. Why does the three-to-five-year thing come into play here when we talk about it?
It, it's the history of Baccaro. The, Baccaro builds these projects, stabilizes these projects, and then sells them. And the reason that they typically do that is because the, the yield or internal rate of return to their investors is much greater if they can do it in the early years than it is if they continue to hold. And so the standard development structure has been to sell in between year three and five. I have actually had clients who wanted to make sure that that happened so that they could receive the 25% of the profits. And so we have negotiated terms that mandated a sale within those timeframes. And, and so, you know, those are some of the things we need y'all to think about and to help us address to make sure we, we get you what you want and believe is best for you.
And at the point that a, a sale takes place, whether it be three years, five years, whatever the case may be, the, the corporations' vote on this is 25%? Or am I mixing?
No, sir, it's automatic. You would, you would get, they have a right to sell. They can't raise equity unless they have a right to sell when they want to sell as a general rule. And so they will have a right to sell, and when they sell, you automatically get your share. If they were, let's just say that they didn't pay, that would be a default under their lease. You would have a right to cancel the lease and take the building.
After that sale takes place, that three-to-five-year sale takes place, so basically, the, the developer has 100% control on who it sells to. So there's no control on the part of the city of whether they are, I hate to say it this way, reputable or not, but this is solely in the hands of the developer for the sale, correct?
The developers would propose that. If it's important to you to put some parameters around that, we can discuss that. If the parameters are commercially reasonable, you may, somebody who has, you know, 10 years' experience or five years' experience in the multifamily business, who has X amount of units under its control, or has developed X amount of units, we can have those conversations.
So is there any reason to have apprehension that if, in the course of the 75 years, this is going to have two or three other owners in it, and at some point, the property through wear or whatever is beginning to decline, and there's no control by the city over who it can be sold to, that this property could actually go in a negative direction?
Well, you will have a covenant in your lease that will say it must be maintained as a Class A property, given its, its age. And they will have to maintain the property, and if they do not, the city would have a right to sue them for breach of the lease.
So that puts us into litigation to try to bring them in control.
I, I hate, I hate to say this, but there's no other way to, to ultimately protect you than to set appropriate standards of high quality. And you will always be in a position where if you want to enforce the standards of a contract, you may have to litigate.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, very quickly, uh, you use the term renegotiate. You mean, basically, when one sale to another sale to another sale? There's no renegotiation on this part of the city? You're talking about negotiating, uh, to a new owner or something like that?
Well, it, it, most likely, what will happen is a, a buyer uh, will come in and make a large-scale investment to rehabilitate.
Right.
And at that time, they, they will come in and they will want to be able to say to the city, you know, we're gonna do these things. And, and there may be a renegotiation. They, they may say to you, you know, we, we've loved your tax exemption, but laws changed, property taxes went down. We really don't need you anymore. Can we cut a deal where you just take your profit from our sale and go away? It, it could be, we just want to make this 100% market rate.
So who negotiates that? The, the, the entity or the, the owner of the property at the time?
Well, it would be the entity, the public facility corporation.
Okay, okay. My next question is, what are the total estimated taxes on $60 million? In other words, what would the tax on assessed value of $60 million be? Have you, does that come forth?
On 80 million, it's about 400,000. On 80 million, it's about 400,000 a year. So it'd be roughly about 350,000 or something like that?
It, it would be, it'd be whatever bear appraisal district set it at?
No, I know, but I'm just making the assumption because they're telling us the property's worth $60 million. So the assessments go, I'm saying, assuming it's assessed at the $60 million. I'm curious what the taxes are versus this $25,000 they want to pay the city in lieu of these taxes. That's where I'm going.
It, it, it's 25% of the taxes on the building, whatever they are.
Total taxes, that's, that's the whole bucket of taxes, not just the city's taxes.
Right, that's what I'm asking. I, I'm just, maybe this is something we gotta go and exa- I, I'm, I'm asking, what are the anticipated total tax savings on $60 million? That's all I'm asking, for, for the builder, for the developer. In other words, he's gotta have a reason he's doing this, or he doesn't need else. He just go do it himself.
Let, let, let me, let me get the developer to run a tax analysis and present it.
Okay. All right, my last question is, can, can the lease say in there, because you put in there arbitrator of the Class A to make sure that it's kept up to specs, is there an official, is there a company that you can identify and say, these are the type of people that we want to look at the property once a year or twice a year in the agreement, that are professional enough to do that? Because otherwise, it would seem like keeping it a Class A property would be subjective. I love those big words.
I'd have to think about whether or not there's a way to do that.
Where I'm going with that. Who, who determines that, that they're not keeping it up to a Class A?
Right.
How is it determined, I should say? Because I'll be, obviously, it's the entity that will say, you're not keeping it up. But how is that determined, where it's not just subjective, and then you get a lawsuit over something that is just subjective? To me, that would be an important issue, anyway.
Well, as a general rule, you would have to have some level of expertise. And so it would, my assumption is, is that it would be either appraisers or it would be a real estate specialist. And we can, we can think about how, is there a way to do that?
Seems as there would be. Okay.
And, and by the way, my quick math, uh, without looking up all the rates, is that on a $60 million valuation, the taxes would be a million five.
A what?
A 1,500,000.
Okay.
So you would get-
Did you come up with that?
City attorney came up with the same number. Yeah.
Okay. So we can't hold you to it? Okay. Thank you, Mark. They come back at 120, who knows? But at $60 million, because those are the numbers we're working with. Thank you. They come back at 120, who knows? But at $60 million, because those are the numbers we're working with. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Mr. Plummer a question?
Absolutely, Mr. Snow.
Mr. Plummer, the, the proceeds of all these transactions, the, the $250,000 at closing, the 25% factors for rent, the 25% upon each subsequent sale, that, that those dollars go to the Public Facility Corporation. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, you weren't speaking in the mic, I couldn't hear the question.
Jim, what I said was, the proceeds to, to the Public Facility Corporation are what we're talking about. The 20, the $250,000 at the closing, the 25% per year in rent, no matter how it's, whatever the, the, the calculation is, the 25% of the profit net at closing, those payments go to the Public Facility Corporation?
They do.
How does that money move to the city? Or how can the, the Public Facility Corporation use that money?
It may use the money for any housing purpose. As a public facility corporation, it can use it to fund any other public facility, like a sidewalk or street improvement, because those are public facilities. It may also determine that it has excess funds and declare a dividend which is the city. And the city then can use that money as general fund money.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Isbram, what was that?
I, I just wonder if I could follow up on that. So the, the city council, city government does not have oversight over how the corporation would use those dollars?
The city will appoint the board of directors of the Public Facility Corporation.
Which could be
Which could be the city council if y'all chose. That just simply means we have to post it as a city council meeting every time the board of the Public Facilities Corporation met. I, I, I would be interested to know from Mr. Plummer's experience how other public entities deal with that issue. But the ultimate control for the city of Castle Hills is the city council will appoint the board of directors of the Public Facility Corporation. And unless I'm mistaken, those directors would serve at the pleasure of the city council, again, asking Mr. Plummer or Ms. Fernandez to verify.
Yes, and I, I actually, given where we are and what we're doing, I'd recommend that the city council or, or, or some portion of the city council be the board of directors of this Public Facility Corporation, so that you are actually making these decisions yourself. And, you know, maybe somewhere down the road, you choose to appoint a committee or citizens, but this is important enough, the council members need to be making the decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory, you've been patiently waiting.
This building, if it's flipped from owner to owner to owner down the road, have they all have to abide by the PFC?
Yes, the PFC owns the building. They enter into a lease.
And the PFC has to own it for 75 years?
Well, no, the, the PFC will have a right, they own it, they'll own the fee interest, they'll have a 75-year lease. That tenant could come to you and, and ask you to give up your rights and you could negotiate for a settlement to get out of the deal, have it just pay taxes. But it's totally up to you. I mean, you, you've got no, there's, there's no way for them to walk away unless you agree. And there's no way for them to do anything with the structure and change that lease unless you agree.
So five or six or seven years from now, somebody came in and they said, we want to make this the top-quality building of the best class. Uh, we don't, we just want to get out of this PFC, we want to run it ourselves, we'll pay the property taxes. We can do that?
You can, with your permission, they can do that. And if I'm your attorney at that time, I'm going to hold them up for a, a buyout. But if you, if you tell me, no, we just want out of it too, we're good, we'll, we'll terminate everything.
I don't know, it, it sticks in my mind that the Tower Life Building was built in '28. And it was sold in the bottom of the depression in '32 for about a third of what it put the building up. Now, I just wonder what would happen if we have a real estate depression as we had in the 80s over in Houston, if it hit over here and tenants just walked. I mean, you couldn't find people to want to come in there, you didn't have people who didn't want to own the building, who want it out and they couldn't sell it to somebody else. Wha- what is it? And it just sits idle because other people declared bankruptcy and/or no one wants to come in and buy it. Uh, it falls upon the city, it sounds to me, or the PFC, to keep the building up to date, up to code. And that's just a bottomless pit while you run through a depression in the real estate industry, which has happened before. I don't know, I'm just thinking about those things.
Any further questions, council? We can. Okay, um, I think in that case, if there's no, uh, action on this agenda item, we will proceed to 6.2. Okay, thank you, Ms. Fernandez. 6.2 deliberate regarding an offer of a financial or other incentive to business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate in the city and with which the city council is conducting economic development negotiations, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087 deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. I did want to take a quick personal point of privilege to recognize a, a young resident that we have attending via Zoom, getting credit for his, uh, government classes, Mr. Thomas Martinez. So thank you so much for joining us through this exhilarating conversation. That being said, we will go into executive session. It is 7:48 on November 1st, 2021.